...for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Would you like roll call?
Please.
Marsha Burke Bigler Chair.
Here.
Kitty Jung Vice Chair.
Present.
Bob Lucy.
Here.
Valen Hartung.
Present.
Jeanne Herman.
Here.
County Manager John Slaughter.
Present.
Deputy District Attorney David Watts Vial.
Here.
I'm Nancy Parent, County Clerk. You have a call. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Manager.
Madam Chair, next item is item three, which is public comment. Comment heard under this item is limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. Commission will also hear public comment during individual action items, with comment limited to three minutes per person, and comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Thank you. I have before me several people, and I will start by calling the first one, and then the second one, please come up. I'll call your name also. First, we have Ms. Tammy Holstel, and second will be Ms. Donna Robinson. Could I have the overhead, please? Good morning.
Good morning. Tammy Hol- Tammy Holstel, Lemon Valley Swan Lake Recovery Committee. After one year anniversary, the water is still there. I am still here. This commission and staff have dissed our valley and residents. Disbelief, disgust, disingenuous, disrespectful, and dysfunctional, to say the least. Disrespect, walking into a private residence and demanding the resident not to speak at an open community meeting, and snide remarks by these commissioners in chambers, which was recorded. Discuss, doing nothing from January 17, 2017, to around March 9, 2017, which is about eight weeks for residents who had no fresh water, no sanitary facilities except for their neighbors. Disbelief is when it took the state of Nevada governor to visit our valley and residents and strong-arm or embarrass the commission and staff into doing something by finally declaring a state of emergency. Also, that after one year, I am still here because of all the excuses to not correct the flooding in our valley. Disingenuous is stating that you would be, you would have monthly meetings with our committee and be open to the residents during this process to correct the situation and work on a permanent solution. Pulling us out of the state of emergency without securing all the homes from flooding and procuring FEMA floods for the continued recovery of Lemon Valley. Dysfunctional is the state, or is in June, when the electrical poles were put, not put in place until after the October freeze, and then they were, then was told they were to save money. How can you save money when they're not, they're not set up? Also, dysfunctional is not protecting the homes this summer until you are embarrassed about the water coming back around them in November at the, on that storm. Words by the staff and commission like transparent, heroic, dedicated, honest, hardworking are words that should not be used by the county or the commission unless they have a better understanding of their meetings. You and I, or you think that I have wasted six minutes of your time every week being here. I have contributed much more than that of my days and time. I will continue until Washoe County Commissioners and Staff resolve the issues in our valley, which were addressed a year ago and dismissed. Have a great day. Enjoy our cupcakes. They are filled with a blueberry cream, and we look forward to you guys working to get something done. Thank you.
Ms. Donna Robinson?
Donna Robinson, for the record, a Lemon Valley resident and a flood victim. It's been one year. I came and spoke to you a year ago about my property being flooded and how much water was on my property. In February, it flooded again, and this time it stayed. I am now, where am I now a year later? I'm almost $80,000 further in debt. Insurance has paid zero, and yes, I had flood insurance. Zero. They said they're going to give me a little bit of money, $500. Whoop, whoop. I'm so happy for that. My house is not going to be 100% fixed. I can't afford it. I would need another $100,000. But it's livable. Am I back in it? Absolutely. I got back in December 16th. Not much by a choice, but by a necessity, as the housing was going to end at the end of December. So I was able to get some money from the Small Business Administration and get a loan. I'm retired. I'm on a fixed income. This is supposed to be my retirement years. This is supposed to be the time that I'm supposed to be traveling and enjoying my life, after giving nearly 26 years to the community and the city. Yeah, I'm a city employee. I'm a retired police officer. I put my life on the line for 26 years for this area. And I'm heartbroken at the fact that every time it rains, I cringe. People put on Facebook, "Don't you love hearing the fresh rain?" No, I cringe. All of us out there, cringe. Because we don't know, are we going to flood again? I implore, I beg, I've been here several times asking you. Do something about that lake. Don't let other residents have the heartache that those of us out there have experienced. I'm lucky. I'm back in my home right now. Still working on it. It's not done. But others are not. Others probably will never get back into their homes, and they didn't have flood insurance. What if it was your home? What if it was you? The stress, the worrying, the health issues, wondering if, am I going to be able, this house that I've had for 25 years, that I've put my heart and soul into, am I going to be able to keep it? Now I'm back in it? Yes, I'm glad I am, but for how long? When is the next flood going to hit? Please do something about that lake. Thank you.
Mr. Sam Danae. And next will be Ms. Elise Weatherly.
Pardon me?
I was just announcing the next person.
Sam, Danae, Danae, the heart and soul and the body and mind of Reno government, and once again, I am very, my heart feels real good to have a sheriff's deputy over here and a security guard back there protecting me, protecting Sam against potential mendacities and prognostications and perniciousness from the crowd back there. Who knows what's going to happen? Thank you over there. I, I'm a charter member, I'm a charter member of the, how would you word it? Save Wild Creek against a billion, against a billion-dollar school boondoggle, jackhammer project that you and several other developers and bureaucrats and the media are supporting. Building that school on the Wild Creek area, let alone on the golf course, is beyond ludicrous, and when I say ludicrous, that takes it to a whole new level because it is wrong. It is absolutely wrong. It is corporate welfare, and you've got to stop it. I'm a charter member of the lawsuit, and I'm going to be a star witness, expert witness for those people, because I've watched all of this through the years. For the Save Wild Creek, they call it that, but it's far more than saving Wild Creek. It's saving Reno from more wasting of public taxes. You know, I always, people say, "Well, why don't you like the media? What's wrong with the media wacko freaks?" I don't, if you could give me 10 hours, I could even just barely start telling how evil they are. Now, the latest boondoggle is that poor guy, the city manager over there at Reno previous, who I nominated, and he did a fine job, and then the media drove him out of his job wrongfully with lies and insinuations and all those things about what he was doing, and now he's gone. Now it turns out, according to the media, Reno Gazette, it turns out that the ladies concocted harassment, sexual harassment cases against him, and do they, do they apologize to Mr. Klinger for the way they anonymously insulted and embarrassed him and his family? No, not a word. The Reno wacko freaks needs to be dismantled, and that would be too good for them. Now, I don't know what's going to happen on this election, C-election coming up here on the Concedor Gen in a few minutes, but I do know, I do know that that election last week was not done according to the open media law, because you allowed, you allowed a citizen to speak when your own directive says citizens can only speak on items that say for possible action. That item did not say for possible action, and you allowed a citizen to speak. That's a violation of your own open media law agenda rules.
Thank you, Mr. Danae. Ms. Elise Weatherly.
Hi, Elise Weatherly, Washoe County resident. I didn't really want to come here this morning. I thought, well, I heard this morning saying, "Well, what would you, what do you want? What would you like to have?" And I thought, well, what I'd like is, like truth. I'd like to know that there's such a thing as absolute truth, and that we can found our lives on it, that there is such a thing, and it can be learned, and it can be done. Well, what would that do? Well, that would help the brokenheartedness. That would, you know, get rid of ripping words and stuff. The other thing was, I was, I heard a message this morning going, "Whatever you accuse somebody else of, whatever you judge somebody else, look at yourself. You're doing the same thing." I'm going, "Well, I hate being insulted and demeaned and abused. I hate people that rip me up with words." And guess what? That's what I do sometimes. Instead of having gentle, good words, you know, it's like we rip people up. If we know the truth about somebody, how do you present it in a way where it will be accepted and you won't be demeaned? And I thought, "Well, what about this whole fact-finding thing? What would that affect?" Well, then there would be news that we could have actual factuals in, which means we would have to have news, right? We'd have to have facts. What about trials? It'd be so great if we didn't have to have such a thing as trials, because nobody would do things in offense of each other. But guess what? We do have trials, and so guess what? We need police. Be awesome if we didn't have to have police and district attorneys, but the fact of the matter is, is that we do, because we've got people out there that actually intentionally try to harm us. What do you do with that? I would like to have the police department have discernment to where they could tell who's on their side and who's not, and not pick on the ones that are on their side, but not everybody in the department is going to have that discernment. They're going to follow some laws, and there you have it. You know what else I'd like? I'd like unbiased judges. I would like judges that would hear the facts of a case and not make a determination based on your status, based on whether you are the elite of the public. If you're well-dressed enough, they are going to have a tendency to go in your favor. Did you guys know that? There are some judges that are like that, and there are some that aren't, but in the meantime, here we are. We have to live with what we've got. I know with the flood people, you know, we all want, we want to be rescued, right? I was driving behind this thing about support disabled veterans and their families. I'm going, "Great. I'm a disabled grandma that has a family. I could use some support, too." But I don't have my own group and my own organization, so I just have to kind of scratch and claw and do what I can, you know, to earn a living and to keep our house together, which God is very good. He provides that for me. And the other thing, too, is that, what I noticed is that I have been hit lately with people are envious of me because of my music and because of, you know, the job that I've gotten, intelligence, all that kind of junk. And I'm going, "If you had any idea how hard my life was, I don't think you'd be envious of me." And so you know what I'd like to do? I would like to support each other as a community, but still, we have to pull our own weight somehow. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Weatherly. Mr. Danny Kleas.
Danny Kleas, for the record. It's been over a year that the flooding first started in Lemon Valley, and nobody cared then. Middle of March, like Tammy says, governor came out, forced you guys to do something. Nobody wanted to listen to us up here at the podium every week. It's pretty sad. Been bringing things to you for the last year, the speeding issues. Mr. Hartung has them in his neighborhood, too. We still have them. My granddaughter still doesn't come out because of it. I did turn in one of those guys, signed the complaint against him. $245 that guy had to pay. Why should I be doing the sheriff's work? Don't know. Ask you guys about speed bumps, temporary speed bumps. Oh, we'll see. Nothing. Asking for solutions to fix the problem out there. Nothing. Our commissioner came as a person to ask to put something on the agenda. Oh, yeah, we need to hear that. Real soon. Here it is, middle of January. Have we heard it yet? No. Still waiting for that one. Here it is. When it comes to people that rely on you to do the right thing, we can't. Because everything that I've heard up here at the podium never gets looked at. Unless it comes to your employees. Oh, or something to pat yourself on the back. Look what we're doing now, after you've been told eight, 10 months. Hey, look what we're doing now. Good. Look at us. Ooh, boy. Yeah. Well, house is flooded for the third time, fourth time. Oh, look at us now, when it shouldn't have happened in the first time. Sad. It is really sad. We can't get the police, can't get things done. We're in threat of flood every time it storms. Yeah, whatever. We got pumps there. Why should I have to listen to pumps?
Thank you, Mr. Kleas. I have no further public comments, so we will close public comment.
And it's Kleas. Thank you.
Kleas, sorry. We'll bring her back to the board. Mr. Manager.
Which is our new employee introduction?
No, four.
I'm sorry, four. Commissioners and managers announcements. Reports, updates, requests for information, topics for future agendas.
Do you have anything, Mr. Manager?
I do. I was going to give an update on Reindeer Lodge, which you asked about last, last meeting. I think as everyone who's driven up Mount Rose Highway is aware, that building at the Reindeer Lodge suffered extensive damage to the roof due to last year's heavy precipitation. The property was damaged in January. It has been posted as unsafe. It's been secured for public safety with fencing signage to eliminate public access. Our field teams, when they travel by there, they check on it frequently to make sure that it's, that it is still posted and secured in that manner. Staff is working with the property owner. I understand that there is an agreement. The property owner has some actions to take, and we're monitoring those actions, and if those aren't followed through on, then we will, we will go to the next step, which, which involves some administrative actions that the county would need to take. And I would just say that your, Madam Chair, your concerns that you expressed, we have checked with building and safety as well as with the fire chief, and they are founded. There is a, a safety structural concern is also a concern with that building providing fuel load should a fire go through that area, so we are actively working on that situation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners? Commissioner Jung?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I have one request, and I'm not sure if this is going to need to be a three-hour rule or even something bigger or just small. I think that considering the housing affordability or lack thereof of what we're experiencing right now, as well as, as a result of that, many people becoming houseless, that we need to come up with as a region and include our city partners, a master plan for homelessness. Where are we going? What, what are the strategic goals? Because without that, it seems like people that are working in the, in that area are working in silos, and nobody is working towards the same place to go, and considering we pay the most of that money into the, our Community Resource Center, I think we should be the lead and see if we can't get the whole region to come up with a master plan for homelessness. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you, Vice Chair Jung. Commissioner Herman?
I first of all want to thank the folks from Lemon Valley for bringing us breakfast. Thank you. There's a project going on between the city of Reno, and we discussed it at another meeting, flood meeting, I believe it was, and, and it's about some man, little man camp trailers that were going to be used for that purpose. So I think we probably have got to do a little bit more planning on that, because we need to be able to supply electricity, you know, sewage, garbage, all those sort of things. So a lot of things to check into there, but yeah, I think it's, it's coming along, so, thank you.
Commissioner Hartung?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and by way of completion of what Commissioner Herman brought up, Commissioner Jung requested that the Flood Management Authority look at a parcel that we have that was recently raised on Mill, Mill Street, where the old Excel building was. And there's a large pad there, more than an acre, 40, I shouldn't say more than an acre, it's about an acre, 45-ish thousand square feet, somewhere in that range. It was unanimously approved by the Flood Management Authority for, and by the way, that is transitional housing is what that is. People who are in programs, who are working towards pulling themselves out of being homeless, and I think it's a great place. Commissioner Herman is absolutely correct. We are concerned about sewer and water and how that would be accommodated, and whether or not the, the man camp structures that were purchased are self-contained. I don't know whether they are, which would alleviate that, and then basically all we'd have to, to accommodate is some form of power. But the Flood Management Authority is, is more than willing to allow that property to be used on an interim basis, and I mean, there's, so we've instructed staff to continue the talks, continue the negotiations, to figure out how we can institute this as quickly as possible. Those are good noises, aren't they?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And, and so Commissioner Herman is absolutely correct. It's, I mean, there's, there's some problems to solve, but this is, it's a, it's a great way to utilize this property. It's right on a bus line, and it, it's just one piece of a bigger puzzle that we have in the region to work on this, on a growing issue. And by the way, we're not, I mean, you see this nationwide, every, it's, this is, it is, it is literally, it's pandemic everywhere. Somewhat like flooding is nationwide. It seems to be pandemic everywhere at this point. We're, we're seeing it now in the east and places that have, have historically never flooded, so it's, it's a growing problem. We're seeing some, some real issues that are facing us as communities, and the, the solutions are not easy. But well done, Commissioner Jung, for, for pushing on that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartung. Commissioner Lucy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I have a couple items that I'd like to see that we have further discussions, and I know Manager Slaughter and I have, have, he said that these items will be coming back, but I do want to make sure that, one, we have just a follow-up discussion to the waste management issue. They did tell us that the Ombudsman was on board. However, there are still issues with waste management, and so we'd like to have that discussion and meet with this, meet said Ombudsman and see what their plan with waste management is moving forward in regards to their plans to deal with service calls within the area appropriately, so that they are being attended to by a local, not by a Phoenix, a Phoenix resident. Secondly, I do want to have a discussion about something that continues to pop up, which is the dispatch issue. The dispatch issue constantly. I know we have that report coming back to us and should be back to us soon. However, it kind of rears its ugly head in regards when we talk about fire, when we talk about dispatch for our public safety issues. We need to have that discussion about fiscal, fiscal equity and equality between us and the others. It keeps popping up that, first, there's certain things we're not paying for, things that we are paying for, and who's getting a fair share. I'm really tired of having that discussion about who's getting what. I think everybody, this is a, this is the one part of government that we should run like a business. If you're getting provided a service, you should pay for it. That is how this business is run. That's how business everywhere is run, and we've had that discussion earlier in our county, our Board of Fire Commissioners meeting, that there is a constant discussion. If you're provided a service, you should be paying for it. That is how it should be, so there is no grary area of what you should and shouldn't get, and so that would be something I would hope that we bring back when we bring that report back in regards to the efficacy of the dispatch, that there is a black and white understanding of what people are paying for the services that they get. And lastly, on a, on a, on a good note, I want to thank all the park staff at Rancho Santa Fel over this last week. We were able to host the National Champion, US Cycling National Championships for cyclocross. Hopefully, all the commissioners and individuals got out to Rancho Santa Fel and got to see this event. From my standpoint, as Chairman of the RSCBA, I'd like to see more of these sports-like events, because it does change the rhetoric of what we are as a community, not just a hot August nights and street vibrations and air races community, but we also have many, many other very interesting events. This was a national championships for US Cycling. It brought people from all across the country and even the world to participate, and the US Cycling executives that were there were very, very happy with the turnout. We had about 6,000 people on Sunday show up. I got to start the, the final race, which was very cool to watch. You see these guys riding basically road bikes with dirt tires for an hour along a two-mile course, and they utilized our park very nicely, and they've kept it, and they're going to fix a number of things. There are sand park up where the kids play. Q and D donated a yard, a couple yards of sand, but they're going to replace some of the sand in our park. They're, they're replacing the grass up there. So I think all in all, great, a great event. Neat to see people out and joining our park. 6,000 people in the middle of January in a park is pretty impressive. And I got to say, my hats are off to our park staff for all the work that they did. I got nothing but rave reviews from the US Cycling executives and the event coordinators on how much, how attentive they were and how helpful they were through the entire process. So big, big wanted to make sure that everybody knew that. So that's all I have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Lucy. Please, everybody forgive my voice. I'm recovering from laryngitis, and so it's still not all there. Mr. Manager, I have one thing. I want to, I think we need a presentation to the board on special assessment districts, how we set them up, why we set them up. Do we have to take it to a vote of the people who are in that area, what they cover, that type of thing. I know there's some discussion about several areas and special assessment districts for various different items, and I think we need a presentation. If you could arrange to have staff present that to us, please. Thank you. Commissioners, anything else? Okay, we will close this and move to number five.
Now we're on to number five, which is our new employee introduction, and what we'll do is the commission will come down, our new employees will line up. One at a time, they'll come up to the podium, introduce themselves, their department, their position, and the board will welcome you to the county. So give us just one second to get set up.
Do you want to give the same title this morning? Was that what you were going to?
Yeah.
The Bad at Brothers.
Twinsies.
The Bad at Brothers.
That's right.
Cheers to it. We're gonna have it down.
Do we hear? Perfect. My name's Pamela Mann, and I am the new Purchasing and Contracts Manager in the Comp Controller's Office. Recently relocated to Nevada from Texas and, uh, am delighted to be here and, and working with lots of great folks so far. It's been a wonderful journey. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, you've got it.
Hello, my name is Susanna Contreras, and I'm an Office Assistant Two in the Washoe County Health District.
Welcome. Congratulations.
Good morning. I'm Jaclyn Early. I am a Social Worker Three with Human Services Agency. Uh, I relocated from California.
Okay. Yeah. I love it.
All right. Congratulations.
Okay, we will close five, and Mr. Manager.
Madam Chair, our next item is item six, which is our, um, our certificates honoring employees. Washoe County encourages lifelong learning and the professional development of all employees, administered by the Human Resources Department. Excellence in Public Service is a series of certificate programs designed to support employee development and performance. Completion of the courses over two years demonstrates the employee's commitment to continuous personal and professional improvement and to Washoe County's journey of excellence, and we are pleased today to recognize that commitment. And I just wanted to mention, um, at our Employee Recognition Breakfast, I got a chance to talk to some of the employees who go through this program, and it is a significant commitment of time. Um, and so we, we thank the employees. We also thank their supervisors, their department directors, for allowing them to improve themselves, to provide better service, the best service possible in Washoe County. So, uh, first we have Suzanne McMahon, who is Library Aid for the library system, and Suzanne has completed the Promote Yourself Mini Certificate Program. Next is Patricia Morrow, Legal Secretary for the District Attorney's Office. Patricia has completed the Essentials of Personal Effectiveness Certificate Program. So congratulations to Suzanne, to Patricia. Next, we have Jean Marie Naylor, Library Aid for our library system, and she has completed the Essentials of Personal Effectiveness and the Promote Yourself Mini Certificate Program. So two certificates. Next is Angela Penny, Public Health Nurse Supervisor for the Health District in Community Clinical Health Services, and Angela has completed the Essentials of Management Development. And last but not least, Ted Qualls, Inmate Property Services Supervisor for the Sheriff's Office, and Ted has completed the Essentials of Management Development.
All right. Thank you all very much. We really appreciate how hard you work for our county, and we all know that you are the backbone and the reason this county works as well as it does, so thank you all very much for, for putting all the effort into it. Mr. Manager?
Madam Chair, our next item is item seven. This is a new item to be, to bring to the Board, uh, Recogniz- Recognizing Employees. This is our Washoe County Safety Committee Safety Recognition Award, and this is our first recipient of that award. So Jeremy, if you could come up, Jeremy Wilson, and his family. That's the, the noise we heard earlier, his daughter. And, um, so this is, as I say, this is a new, new program, new recognition that we're doing, Washoe County Safety Committee Safety Recognition Award. Jeremy was featured this morning in my manager's Tuesday memo. Today's Tuesday, we didn't go out yesterday, but featured his story, came to us and, um, decided that, you know, I have some skills I can provide outside of my normal job duties and providing some defensive training, um, some training and defensive driving, um, as well as kind of an overview of that program, has made some suggestions on how to improve the program as well. So, our first recipient of our Safety Recognition Award is Jeremy Wilson. Certificate, and we also have a new pin that we're providing to that award as well. Here you go, first one.
This is my daughter, Mackie.
Oh, Mackie.
Yep. She's beautiful.
She is. Thank you very much, Jeremy. Take care. She's gorgeous. All right. So, now we are on to...
Possible action.
Oh, the, oh, is that an action item?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. We have a, do we have any public comment, Adam Clerk?
No, we don't.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, now we are on to donations. Madam Vice Chair?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I would like to direct the public's attention to items eight A through i- items eight C two. Eight A is cash donations that are received at senior services for the last quarter in the amount of $3,121.2, which will go to the Human Services Agency. Also, a donation of a vehicle estimated at the value of $1,455, $54, from Mona May Kane to be utilized for auto extraction and live-fire training benefiting Gerlach. And eight C one is $1,800 from the Nevada Big Hors Unlimited Reno to the Washoe County Sheriff's Office for the Sheriff's Office Deputy Reserve Program, including...
Did they ram that through?
I'm sorry?
Did they ram that through?
Um, and to be used for food purchases and travel. And then finally, eight C two is $300 from Fire Show's West to the County Sheriff's Office for the Citizen Core Program. And we, as always, are very thankful and with lots of gratitude, thank you to the citizens out there and organizations that are happy to lend us a hand. We appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
I'm just adding motion.
And I move to approve that.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any public comment?
No, ma'am.
These items? Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the donations. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Manager?
Madam Chair, next item is our Proclaimations, that's item nine, nine A. We have one today, that's nine A, proclaiming January 2018 as National Radon Action Month, and I believe Commissioner Jung will read this proclamation. We do have, yes, we, we do have an individual...
Oh, yeah, hi.
So we'd like to invite you to come down as well with the Commissioner.
Give us a glowing reading, Kenny. Give us a glowing reading.
And, Madam Chair, for the record, we have some packets with radon kits and information over here for the Board. If you'd like to pick them up, I'll keep them in my possession.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Whereas many Washoe County residents don't know about radon, yet need to know for the safety and health of their families, as radon is a colorless, odorless, naturally occurring radioactive gas that is the primary cause of lung cancer among non-smokers, the second leading cause of lung cancer in smokers. And whereas, the U.S. EPA estimates 21,000 people in the U.S. die each year from lung cancer caused by indoor radon exposure, and lung and bronchus cancer kill more people in a year than any other cancer. And whereas, radon kills more people than secondhand smoke, drunk driving, choking, drowning, or home fires. And whereas, any home in Washoe County may have elevated levels of radon, even if neighboring homes do not, and living in a home with an average radon level of four picocuries per liter of air poses a similar, similar risk of developing lung cancer as smoking half a pack of cigarettes a day. And whereas, testing is the only way to know if a home has an elevated radon level, and testing is easy and inexpensive, and when identified, homes can be fixed. And whereas, the University of Nevada Cooperative Extension, the Nevada Division of Public and Behavioral Health, and the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency support efforts to encourage all Washoe County residents to test their homes for radon, mitigate elevated levels of radon, and have new homes built with radon-reducing materials and features. Now therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim January 2018 as National Radon Month, en signed by our Chair, Marcia Burke Bigler. Would you like to say a few words?
I would love to. Thank you. Thank you so much for your support and proclamation for our service. My name, Susan Howe. Um, to this area is, is especially important for all that the proclamation stated, because testing is the only way to know if a home has a radon problem, and since January is National Radon Action Month nationally, University of Nevada Cooperative Extension is again offering free radon test kits to Nevada residents from January 1st to February, to the end of February. The kits are $10 normally, so if you can't use the test kit that you got today, please give it to your friends and neighbors and relatives. Locally, residents can get test kits at the Washoe County Cooperative Extension. It's at 4955 Energy Way, and again, this year at Sun Valley General Improvement District as they're partnering with us. Testing is especially important in Washoe County where 21% of the homes tested have radon concentrations at or above the EPA action level. And when I say 21%, that amounts to almost 2,000 homes in the county that have elevated levels of radon. Gerlach is the highest percentage of homes testing with the, um, action level, and it's an actual two homes out of three, which is 67%. The Reno zip code of 89501 has the highest radon potential at 46, no, I think it's 48%. And then it's followed by Verde at 44%, and Washoe Valley with 42%. And those are of the homes that have tested. Incline Village and Crystal Bay are not far behind at 34 and 35%. And the highest radon level in the state is still found in Reno in zip code 89509. A more important message, though, from all this data and the map, is that every home can have a completely different level, so maps, statistics, and your neighbor's radon level are no indication of what your level will be. Some more statistics, we have distributed over 22,000 radon tests in this county, but only 11,600 homes have been tested, and this amounts to only 6% of the housing units here. Of the homes needing mitigation, though, at least 31% were mitigated, and new homes have been built with radon-resistant new construction, and that's amounts to 105, which is 15 new ones this last year. So residents can get, can I get one over here? A test kit and learn more about radon at one of our five presentations that we're offering in the county. The first one is, um, Wednesday at Verde Community Library. And if we were to mail test kits this year, we are charging $4 for shipping, so it's really important that people can pick up a test kit at the Cooperative Extension or Sun Valley GID. So I'd like to conclude with some more information. Coming down the pike, uh, maybe later this year, the International Building Code 2018 will be voted upon in each northern Nevada county and in Reno and Sparks. And I've been invited to be part of the committee, and I hope to advocate and encourage radon-resistant new construction and new homes being built. I hope that I can find support among your Board for this prevention to lung cancer, especially for those unsuspecting people. And I think that's it. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much for being here. Commissioner Hartung?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Howe, if I have a, a, a kit that, that I've used in my home that's ready to be tested by your agency, where do we drop that off? How do we get it back to you?
So the test kit itself comes with a postage-paid mailer.
A prepaid envelope.
And it goes to Carrollton, Texas, and doesn't come back to us.
I see, okay. Thank you. Thank you for that information.
Thank you.
And, and one last question. So, um, is it the suggestion of, of your agency that Washoe County enact developmental laws in our code to prevent radon so that when the, when the developer is building, they, they automatically institute that change?
That would be our recommendation, most assuredly. Um, there's about 33 states in the nation that have some kind of laws concerning building new homes, but we don't.
And, and, and I, I don't mean to put you on the spot, off the top of your head, how much would that increase the, the cost of building a home? You know, it's, it's no different than putting electronics in automobiles. It, it, it comes at a cost.
We have, have studied, and of course, every home's going to be different because of the square footage.
And, and average.
But I predict less than $1,000 to put in a radon system.
I see.
A functioning one. Um, it could, you could save more money by just putting in a passive system that doesn't have a fan, but we recommend putting the whole system in. And then the new resident needs to test their home when they move in to make sure, um, the system is working or that they may need a fan if they didn't put one in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartung. Thank you very much.
Would you like to get a photo?
Yes, I would love one.
We'd like to get a photograph. That's okay. Yeah. Who is our photographer? And she also would like you to take a picture with her camera?
Boys in, boys in blue, bad at, bad at...
Get us out of the car.
Here we go. In three, two, one more. Here we go, in three, two. I want to take all of this.
Thank you for always being here. Appreciate you. You should probably have the screen. They don't put on their screen. Yeah. He's your one, Justin? Good, I like it. You're so progressive.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. Thank you, Commissioner Vice Chairman. It's an action item. A motion?
I would like to approve the proclamation, Madam Chairwoman.
Second.
We have no public comment shown, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Manager?
Madam Chair, next item is your consent agenda. That is item 10 on today's agenda, items 10A1 through 10A5. Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Hartung?
Motion to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Manager, would you read item 10A5, please? Would love to. 10A5 is approval of...
We have studied, and of course, every home's going to be different because of the square footage.
And average.
But I predict less than $1,000 to put in a radon system.
I see.
A functioning one. You could save more money by just putting in a passive system that doesn't have a fan, but we recommend putting the whole system in. And then the new resident needs to test their home when they move in to make sure the system is working, or that they may need a fan if they didn't put one in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartung. Thank you very much.
Would you like to get a photo?
Yes, I would love one.
We'd like to get a photograph.
Okay.
Yeah. Who is our photographer? And she also would like you to take a picture with her camera.
Boys in blue. Three, two. One more. Here we go. Three, two. Okay. All right. Here we go. And three, two. One more. Three, two. Good.
Thank you for always being here. Appreciate you. Did you publish on the street?
Yes.
They don't. But I'm interested in that.
Yeah.
I had one one time.
He's your one, Justin?
Yes. Good, I like it.
You're so progressive.
This is an action item. Okay. Thank you very much for that. Thank you, Commissioner Vice Chairman. It's an action item. A motion.
I would like to approve the proclamation, Madam Chairwoman.
Second.
We have no public comment shown, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Manager.
Madam Chair, next item is your consent agenda. That is item 10 on today's agenda, items 10A1 through 10A5.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Hartung.
Motion to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Manager, would you read item 10A5, please?
Would love to.
10A5 is approval of Commission District Special Fund Disbursement in the amount of
$7,500 for fiscal year 2017-18. District 3 Commissioner Kitty Jong recommends $2,500 grant to the Eddy House to support their objective day in youth homelessness in Reno, Nevada. $2,500 grant to the Reno Bike Project to support bike valet during the Reno Earth Day event of 2018. That's in the amount of $1,250. A grant to the Northern Nevada Black Cultural Awareness Society to support their mission of developing and promoting black cultural awareness throughout the Tariq Meadows in the amount of $1,250. And a grant to the Friends of Washoe County Library to support the summer winter reading program 2018 to approve a resolution necessary for the same, direct the Comptroller's Office to make the necessary disbursement of funds.
Super.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do we have any public comment?
No, we do not.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Manager.
Madam Chair, next item is item 11, Discussion Possible Action to Approve the Policy of the Use of 911 Surcharge Funds for the Body Camera Mandate Set Forth in Senate Bill 176. And Jamie Rodriguez is here to present this item. And just as a little bit of background, and I think Ms. Rodriguez will get into this, we are in a series of meetings with the board to implement the funding that's allowed in SB 176, and this is just one of the first of those meetings. So we may utilize some additional of our middle meetings, which typically are not action items, but to stay on track, we are going to be using as many of these meetings as we can to stay on track with this process.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Commissioners. So this is a policy that we're presenting to you based on conversations we've been having basically since the end of session. So this is relating to the body camera mandate. SB 176 did require all uniform law enforcement officers to wear body-worn cameras when interacting with the public. It also allows for funding to be raised using the E911 surcharge. During the legislation and during all the committee hearings, there was much discussion that the E911 surcharge funding was optional and at the discretion of the county commission for each individual county, but that the mandate was required. So there was much discussion of the surcharge likely not covering any and all costs associated with the implementation of the body-worn cameras. What you have in front of you is a policy. I'm just going to go over kind of some of the highlights of what we are recommending to have you approve for transparency purposes. We are asking that both the City of Reno, City of Sparks, and Washoe County Sheriff provide itemized documentation to support any funding that they are requesting from the E911 Board. We are suggesting that all agencies use a mutually agreed-upon vendor to provide the body and vehicle cams to help with funding and a little bit for our DA's office as well. Each jurisdiction, excuse me, will get their own agreement with the vendors themselves and have their own contracts. The reimbursement for any of these expenses may be done in whole or in part by the E911 Board, dependent upon there being sufficient monies in the fund to reimburse those costs. Each jurisdiction is responsible for its own compliance with the body-worn camera mandate in SB 176. We do lay out, again, item number 11 here clarifies what SB 176 allows for the funds to be used for, which can be the equipment, software necessary to operate the body-worn cameras, costs associated with the maintenance of the equipment and software, data storage costs, costs associated with the upgrade of the equipment or software, and costs associated with the replacement of equipment and software to implement the program. And lastly, sorry, just trying to read my notes here. Per our review of the bill and discussions, we do not believe, and our DA has confirmed this, we do not believe that personnel for the body-worn cameras is allowable through the E911 surcharges.
Say that again?
We do not believe that personnel costs are allowed within the body-worn camera mandate through the E911 surcharge.
So Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Just for, for purposes of clarification, for me slash us. So that means that any personnel required to assemble the data, keep control of the data, make sure that the data is safe, in the event that we need to extract the data, that personnel cost comes at the expense of each agency. And I'm stumbling here because I'm thinking about how this is all going to work. I mean, that could be a huge cost.
Agreed. When we looked at the bill, and really, a lot of what kind of landed us on this question and discussion, the bill specifically, previous NRS, excuse me, related to the E911 surcharge for dispatch specifically, actually lays out that personnel costs and education is allowable under the surcharge. When we went through the body-worn camera, the sections that were added, there is no discussion of personnel. We went through the legislative history of it, and there is one very brief comment made by Senator Ford during the second meeting, potentially could include personnel, but our DA's opinion was that it's not in the legislation. If they wanted personnel to be included, they could have absolutely copied it kind of from the section above, and that we do not believe that personnel costs are allowable under the surcharge.
Okay. One associated question. So personnel costs are not associated. How about the cost of the infrastructure required as well? So the computers and all the storage space that's required, and the libraries that will have to be created and et cetera, so that the data doesn't get lost or tampered with?
Right. So it specifies that it is allowed to be used for the purchase of the equipment, the maintenance of the equipment, and the storage. So all of those things.
Not just the body cams themselves.
The data itself as well.
The data itself as well.
Yes. So that is all covered under the bill.
Just not the labor to.
Correct.
To handle the data.
Correct.
Which could be huge.
It potentially could be. My understanding in our discussions with, you know, the groups putting together the master plan, other agencies have not seen substantial need for new personnel to implement their body-worn cameras.
I see. How about training of the current personnel?
That is, my understanding is that is included in the purchase of the equipment itself.
I see.
So my understanding is the contract with the vendor that we're looking at right now does include training and everything else to understand how the mechanisms work and how they interface between the body-worn cameras and the vehicle cameras and what have you.
Okay, so let's talk about personnel just real quickly, if we may, Ms. Rodriguez. We know that police officers, there's an obvious need. How about ancillary staff that would also interact with the public? Detectives would be the example.
So the legislation specifically states uniformed police officers. So people like detectives who are not in uniform are not required to wear the body-worn cameras.
But, so not required, okay.
So that would be, so the policy that we put forward allows some leniency amongst the jurisdictions. For example, my understanding is Sparks Police Department is asking for one for everybody because occasionally their detectives wear uniforms to work special events.
Well.
So that they would need it during those times. So there's discretion, some discretion allowed within, obviously, the E911 Board as to what recommendations come to them. The policy just lays out that they have to explain what those differences and variations are so that we understand what they're requesting from us.
And I would argue, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean to step over you, and I would argue that detectives have the ability and the need to interact with the public on a fairly consistent basis and make arrests.
Right.
And are armed.
Right. And not to speak on behalf of law enforcement, but it was my understanding during session that they had requested, it's not the most concealable device, that if they are plain clothes detectives, it would be fairly simple to know that they are, in fact, an officer if they're having to wear the camera.
Right. And I think that that would be at the discretion of the agency itself, but I would think that certain detectives who.
And that's allowable, again, for the agencies, the jurisdictions to bring forward and ask for those kind of ancillary. It's required for uniformed officers, but there is some discretion that if they wanted to expand that, they can. Again, they just have to give the justification to the E911 Board for what would then ultimately come back to you.
Good, so we're not just fencing it to absolute uniformed officers only.
No.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Manager.
Madam Chair, and members of the board, I just want to be very clear, related to number 13 on this policy. I asked for a legal opinion from the district attorney's office, and what you see before you in item 13 is a result of the opinion that I received back from the DA's office. Here's part of the concern. If we include costs that are not actually allowable under the statute, this board has the authority to implement the fee. It's a county-wide fee. County-wide fees fall to the county commission to implement onto the, in this case, the telephone users of telephones. If there was a challenge that we are not properly using that fee, and we've used it in improper ways, and there was a challenge that was successful, this board would be responsible for any repayment that would have to go back to the users that have paid that fee. It's on the shoulders of this board in that manner that the responsibility for the proper use of these fees. That's why we've included this item as number 13 in this policy.
Good point. Thank you.
Could I, one additional information. I have been contacted by both managers of the City of Reno, City of Sparks. They do disagree with this opinion. City of Reno may, in fact, be seeking an opinion from Legislative Council Bureau to get clarification, which is certainly within their rights. But as I mentioned earlier, from the district attorney's office, they have provided me an opinion, which is why we have this number 13 in the policy list.
So what happens if the Legislative Council Bureau disagrees with the district attorney's opinion?
It is working. Excellent. The Legislative Council Bureau offers up its opinion of what the law means. It's not a binding decision. It's their opinion. It's persuasive.
Commissioner Hartung.
On that note, Mr. Watts, we all, could we then seek an opinion from the Attorney General? That would be more, that would potentially be somewhat more binding and persuasive.
Okay, so there's two questions there. Yes, the county could seek an Attorney General's opinion. The Attorney General's opinion would be persuasive as well, but not binding on any court in the future.
Okay. I have one other question, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Hartung.
Either for Ms. Rodriguez or Mr. Slaughter, how does VOIP play into this? That's, this is a question that we've had both online and offline come down, and VOIP circumvents a lot of the taxes that are placed on, I'll call them hard-line carriers. You know, I still have a hard line in my home. I love my hard line. It's not predicated on my internet service. It's something that's completely outside that, different than my cellphone, of course, which I believe we pay, we pay the fees on each line for our cellphone. But VOIP is very different, because you can have a single line coming into an agency. I think us, the county, we're VOIP.
So VoIP, my understanding, VoIP constitutes as a trunk line?
Right.
So they are still paying it?
But that's a single.
So no, a trunk line is the equivalent of 10. So right now, the surcharge is 25 cents.
Okay.
If you have a trunk line, 25 cents per month, if you have a trunk line, you're paying $2.50 per month.
Yeah, but a trunk line can have 1,000 lines on it.
It's the way the legislation, the legislation actually specifies that a trunk line is charged at the equivalent of 10 lines.
So Washoe County only has 10 lines?
If we have one VoIP connection, then I, my understanding, yes. We would be paying for 10 lines.
Yeah, that's a huge loophole. I don't understand, and I'm not trying to pick on VoIP, VOIP, Voice Over Internet Protocol. I'm not trying to pick on that, but that said, it's a circumvention, and a huge circumvention for law enforcement of more monies. I'm still afraid that this is not going to be enough to cover the costs and the ongoing costs.
So, I mean, again, that's legislative, so that's something that would have to be addressed legislatively, but they are paying, whether they're paying their fair share, obviously, is a different discussion that would require far more research than I have at my disposal at this time.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartung. Anybody else comment? Okay. We need a motion?
Sorry, very quickly, can I go over the timeline?
Certainly.
I know the manager asked me to go over the timeline. So what we're looking at, again, this is all dependent upon the E911 Advisory Board. They are meeting on Thursday. Whether they approve the master plan at that point or not, we'll see. I know it's being presented to them. We are hoping for that February 20th, which is that kind of middle meeting again, to bring to you the master plan for agreed approval. The first and last meeting of March is when we bring you both the business impact, the first, the second reading, and the fee increase, which, if we meet all of those deadlines, we believe May 1 would be when those funds can start being collected on the actual surcharge for any increase that we approve.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I could just add a little bit more.
Mr. Manager.
It's our intention, it's my intention to bring to this board a very reasoned, very thoughtful recommendation on the amount of the fee. The legislation allows up to $1, and as Ms. Rodriguez mentioned, there is, we have a consultant who's helping the 911 Board prepare a master plan, looking at both requirements for body cameras, as well as requirements for, ongoing requirements for our 911 system. So it's my intention that we will bring to you a very reasoned recommendation on that final amount of up to $1, and that will follow the timeline that was just provided to you.
Any other questions? I see no public comment?
We do have one person signed in, Madam Chair.
Oh, just signed in. Okay. Ms. Elise Weatherly.
Hi, Elise Weatherly. I'm glad I stayed for this. This was very interesting. One of the things that Mr. Slaughter said, but there's a reason, you know, for the dollar. And what I'm wondering is the body cameras themselves, what's the reason for doing this? I'm going to assume that it's, this data can be taken to court, right, to prove a case one way or another. You said that there's going to be, there's going to be some arrests done, right? And actually, I think it's a really good idea, just from my perspective, because when you're presenting a case, you want the facts, right? And so the problem is the cost, again, it's like, we have to, every time I turn around, there's another cost, another cost, another cost, and it's hard for me to keep up with these things. Just to let you guys know, I went and pulled a case out at the Reno courthouse for a fellow musician that had been tried under a criminal case, and so I decided to go ahead and pay for the documents just to see what's going on, and I paid for a public defendant, a public defender. I go, okay, so, you know, I paid for the police officer, which is great. We paid for the courthouse, which is great. We paid for the district attorney, which is great. I paid for the public defender. So once again, it's like the costs are just piling up on us, and I wish there were a way to make them more fair and equitable. But the other thing I was thinking, too, is when these are taken to the court cases, will they be allowed as evidence? Is there, when you hire somebody to do this data thing, I'd like to volunteer for that job, by the way. I would love to do that. Are they going to be able to say this data has not been interfered or altered? Is it going to be viable data for those cases? Are the officers going to have any kind of way that they can change that data? If not, it's going to be pretty good presentation in a trial. And so just as a public person, I think it's a good idea. It's a protection plan for the officers, but it's also a protection plan for the truth of what really happened, and so I hope it goes through. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's, I see no more public comment, so we will close public comment and bring it back to the board. Commissioners, any comments? I need a motion.
Question to approve.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Manager.
Next item is item 12, which is our final public comment.
I see no one signed in. Okay, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the board, and we are adjourned. Oh, wait a minute. Oh, we have to do Commissioners and County Managers' announcement. We're not adjourned.
Item 13 is our Commissioner and Managers' announcements, our last one of the day. Maybe.
Commissioners?
One last.